Alright, so I have a letter here from Paula Byers. She's writing to ask for our consideration for a position on the Freetown Cultural Council Board. There is currently a vacancy. She's been a resident in Freetown for thirty-six years. Has a D.S. in marketing from the University of Mass. Has also taken some fine and applied arts courses. So, and she also has a second course in advanced grant writing, so what's the board's pleasure? Do you have a motion to appoint?
I'll make a motion to appoint. I'll second it.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. I also have a letter from Nicholas Beloso. He's currently an associate member of the zoning board of appeals. He respectfully submits his letter of interest to serve as a member of the Freetown Zoning Board of Appeals.
Motion to appoint. Madam Chair, I'm gonna recuse myself since I just vacated that board and was a member with Nick.
Alright, so you made a motion. I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
And then extensions?
Aye.
Okay. Discuss the hiring of a council on aging clerk under a grant obtained by the council on aging. Are you here to speak on that?
My name is Ed Medares, Chairman of the Council on Aging, Board of Directors. I come up?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, the purpose is to advertise for the position of part-time clerk. It's being funded by the state COA Formula Grant. It's basically a fifteen, over fifteen thousand dollar grant. We have, I don't know if you have, I have the...
Job description?
Job description. And there's an amount there. Mr. Healy, do you need one?
Thank you.
Okay. The amount there is, the ten dollars is basically your minimum wage. And the fifteen sixty-seven, I believe, is what you, the minimum wage for a clerk. I mean, it would be whoever the personnel board decided to hire, that also would go into effect as to what kind of pay you wanna give that person. The reason for wanting this is that the figures for senior citizens in town have increased quite a bit. Federal census back in two thousand and ten gave it seventeen fifty-one here. We're now at twenty-five seventy-one for seniors. And we only have two staff people on hand, full-time staff. This would be the part-time person. We have, we're trying to get a new grant, a new food service, you know, like we do for Brown Bag every month. We're trying to get another one in, based in Bedford. But, again, we wouldn't be able to do that unless we had more manpower here. That's basically it.
When does a grant run out?
Well, the grant is for every year. This is for two thousand seventeen, fiscal year seventeen.
So, okay.
It would be for the upcoming fiscal year.
Upcoming fiscal year.
Upcoming fiscal year. We wouldn't be able to do anything for this year at all.
This grant is about a grant that you get every year?
A grant that we get every year, yes.
And has the personnel part of it been approved by the state?
Barbara would have to redo the grant as it's... Well, she wouldn't have to redo the grant. She would have to be, do the new grant to reflect for a part-time person.
The one for seventeen?
For seventeen.
So she has to do that. If this is approved, she's gonna have to do that to fund it.
Correct, yes. And verbally, we've already been accepted, verbally, accepted to be able to fund this part-time person through the grant.
Right. I did have a conversation with her and she said that, that the state told her to make sure that she spends the money. Otherwise, it's, you know, gonna go back. So, they also said that this is probably the best way to do that.
Exactly.
Okay.
Would this person be a contractual person? Surely it would be hired for the length of the grant, so if the grant doesn't get renewed in the future?
Right, that's basically what it says down here. It's only, it's only there until the grant is there. If the grant goes away, then the person knows that they can't do anything about it. They have to leave the position.
It's grant-funded.
It's grant-funded.
That's it.
It doesn't, it doesn't affect clerk's bargaining at all?
No.
And the hours, I believe you have only for...
Sixteen to nineteen.
Yeah, sixteen to nineteen hours.
It can be in excess of nineteen.
It can be in excess of nineteen. And, what was my next thought? Gone.
It must be a senior.
Exactly. You know, okay, so I'll think about it later maybe, but for the time being, it's gone. Any other questions? Now, I have a question.
Sure.
Who does the hiring? Personnel board?
I mean, I don't have a druthers in this, so if, you know, Barbara and the COA wanted to do that, find somebody, and one of us could sit on that as well. But I think it comes from you. You have to feel comfortable with the person.
Right.
So, I don't, I have no, no horse in the race.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine with us too. I just wanna make sure that that is the procedure.
Yeah, just as long as we follow the same procedures, the town only follows. We just at least want select, I mean, just, just the, basically, it's the consensus of the interviewing team.
Right.
I, I'll make a motion to allow this for fiscal year seventeen, based on the information that we have here, not to exceed nineteen hours. Of course, there's no benefits included, as long as the grant is available to pay the wages.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, we have a letter from Carlton Abbott. Dear Board members, I respectfully request that the board select and appoint the following individuals as a reserve police officer. Seth M. DeMello. Mr. DeMello has served our town as an auxiliary police officer since August eleventh, twenty fifteen. He's volunteered over four hours of service. As an auxiliary, recently completed the, I believe it's supposed to be field training program. He completed the MCJTC Reserve Officer Training Academy, and he's successfully completed the background investigation, medical exam, drug screening, psychological exam, and physical abilities test.
Make a motion to go along with Carlton's recommendation and to appoint Mr. DeMello.
Second motion to appoint.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so, then, in that room, I have a change of status report for Seth M. DeMello, Reserve One, Police Officer, sixteen eighty-six.
Motion to appoint. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I am.
You got one more.
Alright.
It's just a reword, I guess.
Okay, it's not on...
It's not on yours?
No.
What was it?
Do you have it on yours?
Appoint Jack Healy as Board of Selectment.
That one just needs to be signed by you. It's not...
Oh, it just has to be signed by me?
I'll sign it.
Alright. So we don't even have to vote on this?
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Paul has to sign. Alright, that's it for personnel?
Yep.
Okay, now let's work our way down the line here. Okay, there's a letter from Jeff DiMaranville regarding his intent to remove five. Christopher Drive, map twenty-two twenty-eight, lot eight, from chapter sixty-one eight. And the town has to give its, has the right to purchase the land first, the right to, for first refusal. So are we interested in buying any property on Christopher Lane? Do we have a motion to refuse?
I'll make a motion to refuse. First, first on the purchase and allow the land to go back to Mr. DiMaranville.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? Unanimous. Alright.
Are there just two? Is there two of them, or is it just two?
Not, it's two people, I think it's two parcels within the same.
Okay.
This is what I, oh, you have one, yeah, 'cause I have both of these. Yeah, that's what I had, too.
I didn't know if they were actually the same.
Okay, let's see.
Because they both say Bobby.
Yeah, 'cause I think it's one of two people then. See what it says?
Yeah.
Yeah. Alright. Let's see what time it's on.
We have plenty of time.
Alright, let's go to the next item, which is sign trash recycling contract. Jack?
Yes. Ally sent you the work in progress, and Friday, I believe, I sent the final document that was prepared by Mark Rich and Stephen Masters of Copeland Page. It was given to Allied. Dan Higgins is here. He secured the signatures on the signatory documents that you have before you. Do you have those?
I believe they're in there.
They're below the...
They're in here.
Below, yeah. Mr. Berdick from Allied Republic has signed for the company, and it's been approved by Town Council, obviously, and it's before you for approval by the board today.
They, they executed the contract that was adopted by our Town Council?
Yes, correct.
With the red line changes that were recommended?
Yes, and we have received confirmation from Stephen Masters at Copeland Page that the signed copies are in fact the copies that they were, that were approved by Town Council.
And this doesn't change the way the bid was sent in at all?
No.
Correct? Doesn't change the monetary arrangements that we had agreed to?
That's correct.
So why, what were the red line changes? I mean, I understand them. I've talked to Mark about them as well. I just don't understand, like, why all of a sudden these came about after we awarded the bid?
Mark, Mark Rich has told me that this is a standard procedure that's commonly done in this manner.
Were you asking for any changes?
No.
No?
He can speak for himself.
No, I'm sorry, I thought you were asking me.
We just confirmed, you know, some things like, you know, the RFP determined what insights had to be used, and we just put terms in, basically, if the town changed where we had to go, that we'd sit down and talk about it. I think I commented Jeff, this was one of the fastest contracts we've done ever in two weeks.
Do you have a motion to sign the contract?
I'll make a motion to sign.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion made in second to sign the contract, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No. Okay, so we'll sign the contract and they'll get a copy back?
Yes.
All signed.
Thank you, appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, the next thing on the agenda, let's see. The board to approve the minutes from the Board of Selectment meeting on May second.
Make a motion to approve.
I have, I have a change that I think I'd like to make to... Anybody else find any changes?
Just a little couple grammatical things, but nothing I'm concerned about.
Okay. Under, versus consent agreement for the selection action relative to awarding the trash contract underneath, versus motion, where it says he also liked to say that the current board is also great because we are accepting it. That is, I don't believe that is what I said. I said he should say he also likes to commend the current board, as I commended the prior board, to accept the lowest responsible bid. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Get that change, I...
Make a motion to approve with the, with the change.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Ally, you can have this here. Alright, so that one's done. The next thing is the East Freetown Congregational Church is requesting the approval from the board to use the COA facility here for their annual barbecue on July sixteenth, two thousand and sixteen. They use it year after year. Basically, the barbecue is outside, and they do use the kitchen here during the day to prepare some stuff, and that's about it.
Make a motion to approve the use of the council on aging for the East Freetown Congregational Church annual barbecue.
For a second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the next thing is the ambulance abatement for the month of April. This is a letter from Fire Chief to the Town Accountant. You are hereby notified that the ambulance fee abatement for the month of April, two thousand and sixteen, is to be made as specified in the above schedule, in the amount of thirty-four thousand three nineteen fifty-three. Any motion?
Make a motion to approve in the amount of thirty-four three nineteen fifty-three.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The next thing is FLRSD Resolution calling for full funding of the pool. Can we hold off on that until we get to the budget stuff?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. I'll hold this here. Prove the revolving fund increase for the boat ramp as submitted by the Board of Health Agent Kevin Bernado. Mr. Bernado? I thought he was here.
Yeah.
Okay.
He's still in there.
Let's see. The Mobbet named above, which is the boat ramp revolving fund, has a spending authorization limit of three thousand seven seventy from the town meeting. The department is requesting an increase in the spending authorization for the department's revolving fund for sixteen, which is the current fiscal year, in the amount of six hundred dollars. This, thus, this increase is in the total spending for forty-three seven hundred. The current balance in the revolving fund is twenty-six thousand four ninety-one eighty-six. So basically, they're asking somewhat to a transfer from the Finance Committee on the reserve account. Is that correct?
No. I mean, they already have their money.
They have the money.
They're just looking for an increase in the amount that they can use.
They can spend, right?
Yes.
They have the money.
They do, yeah.
Yeah, because it's, it's within that twenty-six thousand dollars.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. Was this a separate warrant article? It's part of the, the article that authorizes all of the departmental revolving funds. But was there a monetary amount in there from Town Meeting? There is, which is a spending authorization. However, Mass General Law does allow the Board of Selectment and the Finance Committee to adjust that during fiscal year. Because they're limited to their authorization based on what they collected the prior year for the Department of Revenue. So what may happen is they may need more money during the year, and they've collected more money. So as long as they have more money to use, you can authorize an increase in the amount that they can spend. Okay. Alright, I'll make a motion to approve in the amount of six hundred dollars?
Yes, increase.
So, yeah, to forty-three seventy.
Second.
Okay, motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, this has to go next to the Finance Committee, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so...
They have their own form to sign.
Well, this is the Finance Committee votes to approve. Should we, this is...
You have another, is there a two-page form? Because it's a two-page form. One is for the Finance Committee, and one is for you folks.
Have you got another form there?
No, it must be in here. Kevin only gave me this one form, so he, there's a separate form that looks identical to this, right? Yeah, and the Finance Committee gets that as well. They don't get this form.
Yeah, it's the same one I got.
Correct? They don't get the same form. It's the same form, one says Finance.
You want me to just scratch off Finance Committee?
That's fine. No, we'll work.
I'll just scratch that off right now. We'll scratch off Finance Committee right now and put Selectment, and then they'll have to get the other form.
Is no normal order of operations, or go to by ends condition first and then come to what's there?
Doesn't matter, it can go, it goes independently.
What you do with that?
It's probably stuck to another paper clip.
Okay, I can just scratch this off right now. Oh, this one does say Selectment, that's in the file.
He both glanced at us.
Huh?
He must have given both.
So it does say Selectment. It's in the file, yeah, okay.
So this one, I'll do this one.
Alright, the next thing on the agenda, as we're getting close to six o'clock, is cyber liability insurance policy. Jack, I guess you've got the information of this on the board?
Yes. This is a subject that I've submitted to the board previously. I believe we have an email that was also sent to you at my request. I asked Kim Pales, a Town Accountant, to comment on, on this, and she indicated her support for this type of insurance. The, the quote is shown for a limit of a million dollars in cyber liability insurance, to insure against threats of computer attack or actual attacks on the system. Incidentally, just this past week, I, I stopped by the Town Hall in Millboro, and they were shut down tight because they opened an email that is now infecting and moving through their system, doing damage at every turn. So this is really cheap insurance. The annual premium is six thousand four hundred and seventy-seven dollars, plus a four percent Mass tax and a hundred and fifty dollar filing fee. There's an option, Sylvia Group quoted on this for us, also has a five hundred thousand dollar limit quoted. The annual premium for that would be four thousand one hundred and eight dollars, plus the Mass tax and the hundred and fifty dollar filing fee. So we also gave you some handouts from AIG that talked about the specialty risk protection policy, which this is. And I recommend the board take favorable action on this and make it part of the budget, add it to the portion of our budget for the upcoming year.
Kim, you had a recommendation on that too, didn't you, yesterday?
I think getting it is an excellent idea. In terms of the cost, you probably have enough within the budget to cover about five thousand with a premium. So you could certainly do the five hundred thousand worth of coverage without having to increase your budget, but if you were to go with the one million, you're looking at about a two thousand dollar increase to the budget. I think it's worth having, because I think it's probably just a matter of time until we have some of these issues. We've been fortunate so far.
Terms for about fifteen hundred dollars, that would be added to the budget for the million dollar coverage.
Jack, is doing all the departments, the whole town, or specific departments? Does the police already have something in effect? I remember Carlton was talking about cyber attacks on police, police departments.
I don't, I'm not aware of any department that has this coverage.
But this would cover the entire town?
Yes.
All terminals?
Yes.
Make a motion to approve.
Yep.
Makes no difference to me, the million?
For the six four seven seven? I'll second that motion.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, that takes care of that one.
Thank you.
And the next thing, Jack, where are my legislation?
Yes. By our government. Is, gave you some information concerning a bill that's being sponsored by the governor that would make the stormwater management program, which is EPA program, Environmental Protection Agency, the federal agency, will be increasing the requirements for us, and the governor is suggesting that DEP be authorized to administer the program rather than the federal agency. We also have a law, a letter from Lauren Moreau, our planning technician, in strong support for the legislation that's pending. It would be much better for Mass DEP, an agency that we're familiar with and have a relationship with. We're, we're sure that the new regulations are gonna wind up requiring us to do more and spend more for stormwater management activities. And I'm sure if the EPA is managing it, it's gonna cost us more than, than Mass DEP. So I'd urge you to, to promote support of the legislation being proposed by the governor.
Make a motion to submit a letter of support for House four two five four.
Second.
Motion made in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now, for the viewers and the people that just come in, the stuff that we're talking about, we just don't see it for the first time at our meeting. This is sent to us by email throughout the period between the meetings, so we have a chance to look at it and understand what's going on. Alright, the last one is the, well, we get, Jack, you got two minutes. Can you do your administrative review in two minutes?
Yep, I can. Since the last meeting, I've spent the majority of my time working on the following Excel-related matters, South Coast Rail and Great Crossing plans, meetings and correspondence, trash and recycling collection and transportation contract, solar credit projects and agreement payment issues, review of the Town Meeting articles, procurement of road materials, materials to get those out to bed, and also worked on a resolution of damaged claims to a vehicle caused by a snowplow driver and other citizen inquiries. That's my report.
Alright, does anybody have any questions for Jack?
No, but can you answer my emails that I sent you two, two days ago, two weeks ago, please?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it's coming up to six o'clock, and I'm gonna turn this meeting over to the Board of Health Chairman, Robert Jones, and we have the Board of Health bearing this.
I'm gonna put my bearings, we're still a little early.
Well, can I go back in and get rid of one other thing?
Absolutely.
Alright, last thing on the agenda, on the old business. Water agreement.
Is it done?
Is it done? So, to follow up on the water agreement, I sent our attorney a letter, an email, and asking him what was the current status. And the answer is, that I got from May thirteenth, is I spoke to part of a council on Monday. He told me that he was trying to schedule a time to sit down with Mr. Sullivan, who was in charge of the water company, but that he thought that we were very close to an agreement. And asked, and our attorney asked him to focus on the THM issue when he, when they spoke. Our attorney... Our attorney says he will continue to, once a week, to contact Far River and see. I know, but you know, the issue before, first couple of times we met, their concern was that we were slow. But now, now they're the ones that are home. So, anyway, I think, I just think it's a matter of, these guys just have to make a couple of minor adjustments and we're good to go. That's the way it is.
All right. All right, it being now six o'clock, I have opened up the Board of Health, and Mr. Kevin has, hold on a second. I have an application for Board of Health for variants located at 30 Simpson Lane. Property owner is called Lovex by Zenith Engineering.
Good evening, Lord. We have, as you mentioned, some variants for 30 Simpson Lane. Now we see that from Zenith, and it'll be able to explain what's going on. I believe we have some buddies that are here.
Yes.
Have they been notified, everyone?
Yes. Yeah, I have all, I don't know if we'd like the notifications, but I have the certifications that they were sent to.
Yeah, you have to read them for the records.
There you go.
We have two notifications from David and Carol Hall, 28 Simpson Lane, the zone at Mass. And Ronald and Margaret McCarron, I believe.
Macaron, right here.
Macaron, thank you. 19 Green Lane, the zone. Okay, what are you looking for, your variants?
All right, so, what we're looking for is the lot, the existing lot currently is a 100 by 100-foot exist, you know, existing lot, so 10,000 square feet. We have our well, which is, here's Simpson Lane here, here's the existing house. This is where the existing system is now. We're proposing that system in the same exact location as it was before. The abutting well, which is the 28 Simpson Lane, and then Macaron, which is the rear of the property, we're, I believe, 90 feet from theirs. Theirs is to the front. There's no way for us to get, to get 100 feet from any of those wells. Unfortunately, with 100 by 100-foot block, we just don't have that ability. So we, what we did was, we're already asking for, we're asking for a variance to push the system as far forward, as close to the existing house as possible. So we're pushing it as far away from this rear well as possible. We did have our well tested, and it came back, actually, it came back good, there was no issues from what I could see. Everything, you know, was within the state limits. So, again, right now it's a failed system. There's no, the soil there is beautiful, there's no issues with soil, there's no water table. Kevin was out there with us, you know, and he confirmed it. We were using a septic system that reduces the size of the system compared to what a conventional system would be. So the system is already as small as we can get it. So that's, that's currently what we're proposing, and we'd be happy to ask if there are any questions from the Board.
I just have a question, and now, Ryan, you're asking for the variants for 10 feet from mine, and Carolyn Hall's is 60 feet.
Correct. Yes.
I don't know if that's going to cause you a problem.
The, unfortunately, where her well is located, then where the existing, our existing well and the buildings, is it already by?
Yeah.
So here's Simpson Lane here, here's our existing house here, our well, the locust well is in the front of the property. Mrs. Hall's is in the front here, on the side of the house here, and then your well is in the rear, or was, I know it's by the road, but in the, to the rear of us, to the rear of us. So we are maintaining 90 feet from yours, just because of where it is located on that property. Your well is just, it just happens to be that it's on the left side of your home, and, you know, that's why we're asking for, you know, from 100 to 60 feet.
Can you just state your name for the record, too, please?
Carolyn Hall.
And address?
28 Simpson Lane.
Thank you, and sir?
Well, I'm Macaron.
Address? Your address, sir?
19 Green Lane.
Thank you.
So this is where the proposed, the existing system is currently here. These, these were actually variances that were granted when the system was done back in 2002. These variances were granted, and that system was actually larger at the time because there was, this type of system was not currently available. So the, the variances were actually greater at the time. So the system that we're proposing, as I stated before, is smaller, and we're reducing those setbacks.
Just, just for curiosity, from the existing one that's there now, to my well, how many feet is it?
To your well in the rear, the existing one?
My well, you're going for the variance to go from 100 to 90 feet?
Correct.
Right now, the existing septic system that is on Simpson Lane, how far is it from my well?
It's, it's at least, it's at least 85 feet away.
Pardon?
At least 85 feet away.
85, okay. So you're actually pushing it out, which is better for me.
Correct. Excuse me, you're actually increasing the distance between the system and his.
Correct, and which will be a better system.
Which, it'll be a better system, but the system's currently failed.
Yeah. Yeah.
So. What we're looking to do as well is, there's an existing, there's an existing tank that we're looking to keep in place, which will reduce the amount of work that needs to be done in the rear of the property. You know, but we, we're, we have this existing garage. We were able to, because of the setbacks here, we were able to keep 100 feet, just barely 100 feet from, I forget their name, Wright? Yeah, the Wrights. We were able to keep 100 feet from them, but that was just because of the location of this.
Now, I don't know if Carolyn has any questions about, you know, the 60 feet.
If this, if this building wasn't here, I mean, this is a very nice, you know, detached garage. This building wasn't here, we're ma, we're required to maintain at least, we're required to maintain at least 10 feet from it. What we could do, what we would do is we would slide it over, and we would have to affect two wells, but the, the state would like us to affect as little wells as possible.
Because our well was done in 1999 for the couple that lived there before us, and they had to do Title V, they had to do a well. So that's when they had the septic system and all that, and the well. And it was done, everything to code as it was supposed to be at that time, since 1999, moved in.
Kevin, the, the town requires 100 feet, what's the state minimum?
50.
50 feet, so they're, they're outside the state minimum of 50 feet.
Well, it's 100, but you can't go on less than 50.
You can't go less than 50. And you're at 60, correct?
And the lot size is, again, small.
It's already non-conforming, 10,000 square foot, non-conforming.
It's, it's probably the best you could do on that, and the good idea is, it's a new system. And we're gonna, we want to test one more time on the well after the COC's issued a year later, and it'd be a D restriction. But besides that, where it's located, it's the best fit.
And you're actually asking for variances for both the wells and move it closer to the house, the setbacks from the house?
Correct.
From 20 down to 17.
And we're also asking for, and this is minor, but we made a decision on the site to only dig one, we're required to do two deep holes, but because of the, you know, where the existing system is, we would have to dig within the existing system to do it.
Kind of have to put it away.
So, yeah, exactly. So we dug outside of that system, this is the perk test here, and we dug over here, this is where it is currently, we would have, we wouldn't have had anyone to do it. So that's why it is four.
Any other questions? Boy?
Make a motion to approve as recommended by the Board of Health agent with the setbacks as stated.
Here, I wish he was, but he's rejected.
I'll second that motion.
I have a ma, motion made and seconded, any discussion? There are none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Suppose, abstain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You, too.
Thank you. They signed both, how's that?
Yeah, thank you.
I think I'm done. Do you have any further questions? 605, I'm at 01.
Are we good? You guys all set? Okay. All right, the next thing on the agenda is a public hearing for a name change regarding J&amp;T Auto Salvage. Anybody here representing J&amp;T Auto Salvage?
I am, sir.
Come right up here, sir. Fill us in on what's going on.
My father passed away in October of 2013. Since then, the Board has graciously allowed me to renew the Class III Auto License and the Auction License. And subsequently, I bought from the estate the business, and what I would like to do, my name is Joseph Costa III. My father was Joseph F. Costa Jr. I would like to transfer the licenses to my name and to continue to operate the business.
No, without any changes?
I'm going to try and keep it the same way and try and keep everything as copasthetic as possible, sir.
Make a motion to approve the name change to J&amp;T Auto Salvage for Joseph F. Costa III.
With no changes, I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Be good to go, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am, thank you, sir.
Have a great night.
You, too.
Five minutes early.
That would be a, that's just a, that's not a public hearing, right? So we can just proceed?
Yes.
We can just proceed because it's not a public hearing?
No.
No, this is a discussion, last time we met, I think it was last time, the people that were concerned about, you all set?
Oh, yeah, I'm set.
People that were concerned about the Algonquin Pipeline, they wanted to come back to meet with us tonight and come right up.
I'm back.
Wendy Grasha, we got the daily rose, it's free time.
You look familiar.
You do, too. I'm happy to report.
So, you guys want to talk about anything tonight?
Just looking for status on the Board's stance, and then, in the hopes that it's real, I hope it is. I have some documents to help out across that season.
Well, I know, after the last time, long ago, there was a technician, I asked her to look at some of the things that this power is doing. And she was kind of put together a resolution for the Board to consider tonight. I know my cohorts here have copies of the resolution, of course, we have all discussed it, you know, in the open meeting, so I would like to find out if the Board has any desire to sign a resolution regarding the Algonquin Pipeline.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to read the resolution so we're all?
Sure thing.
Sorry, I know it's a little long, but, just so the people know where the resolution was.
I'll read it for you.
I don't mind reading it. Payback is terrible, you know.
Put me on the cert board.
Good show, good show. Okay, a resolution, if the Board chooses to pass this and sign it tonight, this was what it would say. Whereas a high-pressure pipeline carrying natural gas currently called Akushnet under the Access Northeast Pipeline proposed by Algonquin Gas Transmission LLC would run through Freetown, Massachusetts. Whereas the cost of said pipeline would require Massachusetts citizens to pay a utility bill tariff, making tax payers.
Thank you.
Making rate payers bear the financial burden for the endeavor of a private corporation. Whereas the Attorney General's Office and the Commonwealth of Massachusetts determine that increased gas capacity is not needed to meet the state's electrical reliability needs and would be more expensive and less environmentally responsible than any other available options. Whereas, in addition to the inherent risk of high-pressure gas pipelines, possible ruptures, fires, and explosions, and possible impacts to sensitive areas along the pipeline route, frac gas may carry additional risk of hydrochloric fracturing and chemicals. Recognizing as well the added environmental burdens for communities that are the site of the fracking. Whereas there is a growing concern regarding the impact of methane, the main component of natural gas, on global climate change from gas leaks at drilling sites and along the pipelines. In addition to the impact of carbon dioxide produced when the gas is burned. And whereas the town of Freetown has a direct interest in protecting the public health, public land, and the environment of Bristol County, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, New England, and our share of the world. Therefore, be it resolved that the town of Freetown Board of Selectment opposes the construction of the Algonquin Pipeline and any such new or expanded pipeline carrying frac gas in the town of Freetown. Oppose any tariffs that may be imposed on Massachusetts rate payers to fund the Akushnet Pipeline and all such new or expanded frac gas pipelines. Ask that our state and federal representatives and the Governor oppose the Access Northeast Pipeline and any other such new or expanded pipelines carrying frac gas in the Commonwealth. And oppose any tariff on our taxes that may be imposed on rate payers to fund any of the same. And be it further resolved that the town clerk shall forward a copy of this resolution to Governor Charlie Baker, President of the Senate Stanley Rosenberg, Senator Mike Roderick, State Representatives Paul Smith and Carol Viola, Senator Elizabeth Warren, Senator Edward Maki, Congressman Joseph P. Kennedy III, and the Chair and Commissioners of the Federal Energy Regulatory Commission. Thank you.
You were here again, I didn't hear it.
Wait until they show the video.
Make a motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the resolution. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay.
Thank you.
And you're going to sleep tonight, that's the key.
Tonight, yeah.
For a little while.
I know, I know, and there are other steps.
Right.
And here's documentation to help you with the steps. Giving those packets to you. There's verbiage, there's things you can do, very easy, not, not, you know, too burdensome.
This Thursday, again in Akushnet, right?
No, Wednesday. Wednesday at 6:30. 6:37.
6:30.
6:30.
We have a slot, we can get 6:00, and I can a little, and you can get some. This is for you, Jack.
But you know, well, you know I would be there.
I mean, as long as you guys submit your opposition in writing. Also, there's the letter from the AG's office asking for them to extend the comment period. If you wouldn't mind, wouldn't mind sending something and writing, just jacking her. I have a letter that I wrote, it's in there, you can copy it if you want, I don't care.
Okay.
Just, just the more pressure, because they have draft resource reports that are coming out at the end of June.
Right.
Why they haven't been a commenting file in public before that, well, we know why. So, the more pressure we put on them, the better. And there's also information in there about municipal coalitions that have been formed. I believe that there is one starting around the Sharon area on this project. So maybe down the road, depending on how things go, join that coalition, but, you know, just stamp our name on it. Obviously, after the actual official filing, become an intervenor, which just gives you legal status to get, have access to everything and raise a stink, essentially. And I can give you guys all the instructions on that to make your lives easier.
That is a, that's a public document, we can, we can download, or we can see on video, the resolution that you just read. Once we sign it, yes, it will be available.
I appreciate it.
I'll make a motion to ask for an extension on the public comment period and send it to the appropriate people.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
We thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for appearing at that meeting the other night.
Who is it?
We have to thank them for appearing at the meeting.
Oh, you're very welcome.
It was greatly appreciated.
Your standing ovation for the Acushnet.
It was a little crazy, a little overwhelming, that's not why we did it.
I was like, what is going on?
I turned around to see who they were clapping for, and then I saw Lisa.
I was like, what?
Well, as you can see, it's, it's very, it's high tension, it's supercharged. People are stressed out, people are worried, they're scared. And I mean, there was maybe ten percent of the room was Freetown. Because a lot of Freetown people don't even know, have no idea.
Right.
Acushnet knows, a lot of them Acushnet knows. Not enough, but...
I thought that Hall was going to be jam-packed.
So then we...
It should have been.
It should.
I've been hoping it will be this week, because this week is bigger than last week. So...
A little bit more advertising, don't they, though, right?
We've tried, from door to door.
Yep.
That's all I can do.
Right. All you can do is put the information out there, do what you're doing, and, you know, that's all you can do.
I'm just hoping that people do their research and, I, I mean, they just consider the source of where this information's coming from that's so great, and what they stand to gain. And then think about somebody like me who's lost sleep and have been working on this for six months and researching it. It, I'm not gaining anything except status quo. That's it. Preservation of our town and everybody's health, that's all. And for people to not get that, I, I, it doesn't take much to Google pipeline incidents. These pages, we don't need more, there's no need for it. So, I thank you all very much for your help.
And we appreciate what you're doing as well.
Thank you for your...
We just hate to see ourselves being held hostage for capital gain.
Right.
It's not a...
Surely, they're not making, they're not putting this effort in to take care of, you know, a month's worth of, uh...
Right.
Gas needs, which doesn't happen very often.
Exactly, doesn't make sense.
Especially when we're saying that they're charging almost more than what our units that we use on the delivery charge on our electric bills.
Yeah.
I get it, and I see it's sixty dollars that I've used in electricity, but the delivery charge is sixty-four dollars.
Yes.
No.
It, it also blows my mind that people aren't aware of the twenty thousand-plus gas leads in the state of Massachusetts that everybody's paying for.
Heckin' motors.
It doesn't matter, and it's escaping into the atmosphere, you're still paying for it. You're paying for it as if you used it, you didn't. Go fix the aging pipelines that are putting people in danger and sickening everybody in our environment. Before you put up new ones, you're not even responsible, they're not even responsible enough to take care of the ones they have. It's, it's awful.
Well, everybody wants a piece of the big pot, that's what it is.
I just want a piece.
No, 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 no. A big, big company, all they want is a big piece of the pot.
Somebody has to...
I have a question. Um, when you were at the FERC siting meeting last week, you had stated that Freetown has hired council?
We had, um, yeah, we've been talking to council about this and reviewing proclamation and those kinds of things. So, Jonathan Silstein of Copeland Page, you know, he's, he's, you know, the one that represents us. So, he has some other cities and towns that are doing the same thing as well.
And as far as the conservation land, I, I live on Nestles Lane, Karen Daly, and we're right next to the Betsy Taber Bird Sanctuary. So, had the town already given approval for that to be surveyed?
No, no, no. That's what I was saying, I gave January direct the other day, I'm sorry you missed that, but we, we did that right away. We knew that that was conservation land that was given to the town, get to the town. Um, we wanted to preserve that, and so we denied that any access to that land at all.
That's got to be three, three months, three, four months.
Yeah, yeah.
And they, when people were getting the letters about surveying, they came here, and we said no. The board said no.
I just wanted to double check on that.
Is that piece of, does that...
Keep your eyes open, though. That doesn't mean they won't.
Right.
Does that piece of property stop them from going any further with it, or can they go around it?
Well, they go around it.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
They go around it. Just can't go, they, they can't go through it.
Mm-hmm.
They could go around it.
But if they went down the road at my house, down Nestles Lane, and the Betsy Taber Estate is right next to us, um, I believe the Betsy Taber Estate extends out halfway into the road. So, they wouldn't be able to use our road.
I can't answer that.
I mean, if, if you've said no to them, and Freetown said no to them, and you own one side and Betsy Taber's the other side, they shouldn't be on your road, as far as I can deduct.
Well, you know that...
I mean, they could drive it, obviously, I'm talking about surveying it.
But if they get, if they get a permit from the federal, I don't know how we're going to spot what they do.
Right, well, that's what all these efforts are, in the meantime, doing what we can. But in the meantime, part of that, which South Coast Chiefs United was working very hard on, was getting everybody in the pipeline path to deny access, because that makes it that much harder for them to do their resource report.
Right, it's just a roadblock right now.
Right. They, they have to go to court to force it, to, to be able to finish their environmental reports.
Right.
We don't want to help them, so we've said no. But it'll be interesting, because if they come up with environmental reports, how'd they do that?
Yeah, because there's wetlands down there, I mean, there's wetlands right down on Nestles Lane now. You know, since that road has been closed for a good fifteen years, um, you know, that road has turned into wetlands, part of it.
And that conservation land should be protected by Article ninety-seven.
Right, so that's, that's why I'm unclear as to how they could even ask to survey that land. But I'm not really up on laws for conservation land either, you know, so I don't know how it's possible they could even infringe on that.
On Nestles Lane, the, the, last time I was down there, there was a, a log going across, is it still there? The log? They have it, no one moved it back.
That's right next to my house.
Right near to your house.
Right. We put it there because there was a lot of traffic going down there, and there were people going down the road dumping things and drinking and...
I just, I live up the street, I live on Dr. Brady. So, I went down there a while back, I saw it, shut up, but, you know, how are we going to know if they, if they actually, if you see them out there on conservation land, you should call.
And you should call police, too.
Oh, I would, yeah, I would, yeah.
There's no business being there.
They weren't giving permission.
They weren't giving, yeah.
I mean, how, I mean, you guys are right there, you'll see them, I mean, we, we're not going to see them.
Right. The, the, the town residents have to be vigilant and pay attention to what they're doing.
My dogs will see them.
Good.
Hopefully, they'll see you.
They might just let them out, right?
Hopefully, they'll see your dogs, so, meet your dogs.
I hope they're big ones.
Yeah, they're huskies.
Okay, all right.
They look like wolves.
Oh, boy.
All right, we good?
We got it.
All right, you guys don't want to hang around for our budget.
Now, we're good.
Anybody interested, anybody interested in becoming, uh, joining the Finance Committee or anything?
Um, my plate's full right now. Maybe down the road in two thousand eighteen.
As soon as we defeat these people. And once we defeat these people.
We said we want to focus all up on this LNG, though.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Thank you. Are we done till seven? No, because the Finance Committee didn't post the meeting. They didn't post the meeting, they did not post the meeting. So, we're off in winter. No reason for us not to wait till seven.
Well, is that, it's not a public hearing, huh?
No. No, it was just a meeting, they had requested it, you know, they always want it a little bit later. Does anybody have a problem moving forward? Ken, do you have any idea if anybody's coming?
I honestly don't know.
You don't know?
I only talked with Brad, and he looks like a Rhode Island, he might be late, but, you know, we can't do anything anyway, so...
You want to be their representative, Ken?
Well, we're sitting, listen, maybe I have a question, but that's about it. Figure out what articles are in or out, or whatever's going on.
We should just send that proclamation to the, as our comments in that thing.
To, uh... Part of the, the, the...
Yeah.
Yeah, to the state agency.
Yeah. Because we said we were going to send a comment, so why don't we just take that and just send that as our comment?
Grab that before I...
Can you do that, Ally?
Yes, you will, for anybody. Thank you.
So, the proclamation, can you send that as our comment to FERC?
No, not FERC, the state agency that conducted the, uh, the hearing last Thursday, I can't remember the name of it. But certainly, she, she would know. Uh, Wendy would know, and, uh, in addition, I think Lisa's asking to send it to them, in addition to anybody that we're going to address.
Right.
Right.
And we need to send a letter, uh, asking them to extend their comment period.
Comment period.
Yeah.
All right, so, we're going to start off with the Article One, Omnibus Budget. I don't think anything has changed until we get down to page, I think it's page six. Page six. Which is the school budget. I don't know if you guys, if any of these have gone out, you guys, I know Ally just made some copies.
Yeah, I have new packets, if you want to do the new packets.
You have a new packet? For all of us?
Yeah.
Your email said you had all the changes in there and everything?
All right, so...
It has the new, uh, conservation article that you sent out to me on.
Oh, okay. Class C is down? Class S is down? All right, that's yours. No, that's Lisa's, this is mine, here. Okay, now, I want to make, hold on, I gotta, I don't want to screw this up. What's the date on yours, that new packet? The date, the date of the... Sixth?
Yeah.
Oh, they're all marked the sixth. All right, I got to make sure I... All right, I'm going to just put this aside. All right, so we're going to use the new packet from today? All right. Does the paperclip significant?
That's just the omnibus.
That's just the omnibus, okay. All right, so... So, we get down to page six, I think is the first, if I remember right, is the first change. That has to do with the school. And I guess behind that, back, Ally has included a analysis. That's the thing I was passing out to you. Yeah, that's, that's the latest one, right, that should say?
Five sixteen.
Yeah.
Five sixteen, ten thirty-one AM.
All right, and what this, uh, what this chart shows is, um... The original request that was voted by the school district at their meeting, I guess it was April twenty-eighth, where, um, their total budget, overall budget was thirty-five million, nine sixty-seven, seven seventy-two. That's in the second block down on the right. And then, how, how this thing is computed, uh, this is for Bob Joseph's knowledge. What they do is they take the original budget, they reduce it by the, um, transportation costs and the, uh, and the debt. And they, they arrive at a, an adjusted budget. And then, they reduce the adjusted budget down by offsets that they're going to use to, to lower the, uh, the thirty-three million, oh eighty-nine, two sixty. And that brings it down to twenty-one million, one thirty-five, seven thirty-two. Now, the state is requiring, meaning the two towns, the required net school spending for the two towns amount to eighteen million, two hundred and thirty-five dollars. And that allocated, that allocation is done by the state. The state says Freetown has to pay seven million, seven thirty-six, one twenty-seven, and Lakeville has to pay ten million, two sixty-four, one oh eight. So then you subtract the eighteen million that the state is requiring from the amount of the twenty-one million, one thirty-five, seven thirty-two. And it says that to make up the difference, there's an additional three million, one thirty-five, four ninety-seven that has to be funded by the both, uh, the two municipalities. Now, that amount is then allocated based on the per pupil enrollment. And, and the per pupil enrollment for Freetown is one hundred, uh, one thousand, two hundred and twenty-three kids. Lakeville is sixteen, thirty-two, for a total of twenty-eight, fifty-five. And I'm, I'm reading the figures right from, right from the, uh, that was supplied by the school. So we're, our portion of that, uh, three million, one thirty-five, four ninety-seven is forty-two point eight three seven, one three percent. I brought it out on, just to make sure the figures come out the way they, they proposed it. Once they come up with that breakout, they add back the transportation, which is two million, oh sixty-five, two sixty-one. And then they reduce that by the transportation reimbursement under Chapter Seventy-One, which is one million, three twenty-eight, one seventy-eight. And it gives us a balance of seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eighty-four dollars. And that is spread between the two municipalities based on per pupil. So that add, so that, that's spread there, that, and that's going to add back to the twenty-one million. And then, the next block down, where you see eight hundred and thirteen thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars, that's the debt that we have to pay in fiscal year seventeen. And that breaks out based on the debt assigned to both, uh, towns. It's not based on per pupil, it's based on the actual debt that Freetown has with the schools and that Lakeville has with the schools. Kim broke down, if you go over to the left box, you'll see where we owe a hundred, uh, the, your amount for, uh, the middle school is one hundred and twenty-six thousand, four fifty-two for seventeen, Graze is seventy-five thousand, one oh six. The technology, uh, part that, when they, when they redid the technology at the school, I don't know, about four or five years ago, seventy-five thousand, four thirty-nine. And the thirty-one thousand, two forty-six is new in seventeen, because this is the amount, this is new in seventeen, right?
What, the track?
The track is new in seventeen. Uh, it's going to be similar to what we're going to talk about a little later on, where we get that letter from the school looking for five hundred and ten thousand, uh, thousand dollars to fund repairs at the pool. So that's where that stuff comes from. So, basically, if you look down, you're going to see that, um, under the school committee scenario, we're going to owe nine million, seven oh three, two seventy-two. Lakeville's going to owe twelve million, nine eighty-two, seven ninety-four, for a total of twenty-two million, six eighty-six, oh sixty-six. Now, what happened was, Lakeville is basically leading the dog here, because Lakeville has to pay, they're paying more because, they're costing more because of their student enrollment and the split that the state did. But Lakeville proposed and has voted, their Board of Selectmen, and I verified it again today with the, with the, their town administrator, they voted that they're going to give the school department an increase of five hundred and five thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars. If you look up in here, you'll see it. Up, go right up in the top here, come down to where it says total increase over fiscal year sixteen. That's it there, okay? So, in essence, what, what Lakeville was kicking in, they're giving a, their amount that they're giving is four point one three seven percent higher. That's, that's the percentage that they're giving. Now, this year, I mean, in all the years, we have to follow, the highest person leads the, the pack. Luckily for us, this year, Lakeville is the higher person. Last year, we were the higher person, and we had to give more than we wanted to give because, and, and Lakeville agreed, because they agreed to a certain level, we had to match that level. So this year, if all holds true, our increase is only going to be twenty-one thousand, oh ninety-six.
That's what we're recommending for an increase?
Well, that's, that's what we have to do based on what Lakeville does. All right? So, in essence, we're still going to be given one point, one million, one hundred and forty-five thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars more in net school spending in Lakeville than we're required, and Lakeville's given one million, five hundred and twenty-eight thousand, eight seventy-four over their net school spending requirement. So, the bottom line here is that the board's going to have to decide. Uh, I talked a little bit with the town administrator over in Lakeville saying, I mean, uh... can a, and, Kim, maybe you may have the answer, but can a, can a joint town meeting be forced? And the answer that I got today was no, as long as you match your commitment based on what we're given, they cannot force a joint town meeting.
If Freetown and Lakeville, both town meetings vote the same number and go along with the selectman's recommendation, then no.
No.
If one town votes differently, then yes.
Then yes, okay. So basically, I think it behooves us to follow, and to follow the, the lead of Lakeville and give our portion.
The twenty-one oh nine six.
Right, so I mean, basically, you look at the bottom line down here.
Right, I see.
Yeah, nine point, nine million five oh five eight thirty-four. That's who, be what we have to give. And Lakeville's gonna give twelve million seven nineteen three twenty-seven. How much is that over this year? Is that this year's number? For us? Yeah. For us, it's about.
It's less than last year.
It's, it's about twenty-one thousand. It's not less than last year.
This is the total.
Last year, last year's total was nine million four eighty-four, seven thirty-eight that Freetown gave. This year, we're gonna give nine million five oh five eight thirty-four.
Right, because, the only reason we're doing that is because of the athletic facilities, the debt for the athletic facilities.
Track increase.
Right. Because last year, in just educational assessment, we gave eight million nine thirteen oh four oh. And this year, we're given eight million eight eighty-nine four eighty-two.
Right, that's because of the shift, that's because of the shift that the state imposed. Does anybody wanna make a motion for a figure or not?
Where, first of all, I guess, how are we doing, are we gonna do just a bottom line? Are we gonna do it the way it's, it's laid out here?
Well, you had it, you had it laid out this way.
I asked her because I wanted to see what, I want people to be able to see
Yeah, I think we should.
what you're paying for each thing.
Right.
I, I think that it's a great comparison from year to year.
Yeah, and that's what this does for you. That's what my sheet does for you. In other words, the top figure, education for our, would be eight hundred, eight million eight eighty-one eight forty-five.
Eight eighty-one now, so this number's changed. The eight million eight eighty-nine four eighty-two is now what?
That was, that's eight million eight eighty-one eight forty-five. Look at my sheet, I'll show it to you.
The eight 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 nine is from the regional finance committees.
But one of the original ones, right?
Yeah.
Okay, and then the next thing, the transportation assessment would be three one five seven forty-six. And then the debt is gonna be the exact same thing that you see here. The transportation went down, I think, because there was a little bit more money coming in to offset it, plus the, this, the per pupil issue.
What was the number of the education again, please?
It's right, it's right on your sheet there. See the sheet there that I handed you right there?
Oh.
Look on the education, where it says total education assessment for Freetown. Eight 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 one eight forty-five. The problem that arises if you don't go along with what Lakeville is doing, if, if you, if we give more and they don't change, and I don't think they will according to the town administrator there, you're gonna force a joint town meeting. And then all bets are off.
Anything can happen.
Anything can happen.
Oh, it's gonna happen.
What? Joint town meeting?
No, it's gonna, I mean, it's gonna happen that
What?
you're gonna, I, I believe what's gonna happen is that there will be a, people in the audience that will vote to recommend the school committee's budget.
Yeah, so what?
Okay.
And it's up to our people.
It's a po, it's a possibility.
It's always a possibility.
Right.
It's up to our people to make it, our towns voters then have to make a decision that they have to live with, that's all. But I don't think we should force the issue and force Lakeville off, right off the bat, to go into a joint town meeting. When you go into a joint town meeting, the town will lose. The town will lose. So we have any recommendations on numbers or not?
This, on the, on this sheet here, the official packet here. Yeah, are we right at the nine five, nine point five two zero oh seven eight number, is that?
No.
No, we're using that number.
It's nine five oh five eight three four.
Right.
Yeah, why did I saw that? I, I appear in the two.
That's what we're at.
So it's fifteen fourteen, change going. Yeah, I'll make the motion to go with the nine five oh five eight three four.
I'll second it.
Motion made and seconded to go with the nine million five oh five eight thirty-four, with the breakout of educational assessment of eight 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 one eight forty-five, transportation of three one five seven four six, and debt three oh eight two forty-three.
And that keeps us in line with Lakeville's.
Right.
Right.
Motion being seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. So Kim, can you make those adjustments?
I will, absolutely.
That's what's confusing us, the difference between the two.
Right.
Alright, what do we got next? See if there's anything else on this budget.
On page seven, the trash amount has been reduced based on the award of the contract.
Yeah, I had a sheet here on that too. That I had put together here. Okay, so based on the contract for fiscal year two thousand and seventeen, that figure is three twenty-six oh seven six.
Can you say it one more time, Paul?
Three hundred and twenty-six thousand seventy-six dollars for fiscal year seventeen. That's it, right, Kim? One of these? I wish I missed something.
Uh, I think that those are, those are the big ones, yeah.
We're gonna change the liability insurance or whatever insurance we're going under.
The thing that we approved tonight?
Yeah, do you wanna, do you wanna go up two thousand?
Yeah, we're gonna do the million dollar figure, whatever that was.
Yeah, so it looks like it's about eighteen hundred.
Mm-hmm.
So a little cushion there, okay.
Kim, once you update this, you'll send out another copy to us?
Absolutely.
I don't have to. The special's clean, right? There's nothing, nothing changed on the special.
As far as length, the special is fine. Alright, so that's done. The special, everybody's good, I don't, anybody have anything issues on the special?
No.
That was good.
Okay, that's good.
I was just wondering, is there anything closer on the closing bargaining?
I'm good tomorrow.
We don't want it yet.
Okay.
Here's twenty-four hours.
So the deal is, if, if that doesn't happen, then we gotta, we can pull this, not it, right?
No, we leave it on, but on town meeting floor, we, we withdraw it.
Capital, which kind of one's having?
The one about the, to fund the police contract.
Yeah, you gotta withdraw.
Okay, we have to take a vote?
Aren't you approving the warrant tonight though?
I think we can withdraw, we don't even have to have it on the warrant. You don't have to have it on the warrant.
No, because we have to do.
No, we have to have it on.
No, you don't, 'cause the warrant.
Go ahead. Say your piece and then I'll say mine, go ahead.
No, you say yours and then, and then I'll, go ahead, say yours.
I thought we were keeping it on the warrant in case tomorrow, everything works out well.
Are we readdressing the warrant Wednesday?
Wednesday night.
So Wednesday night's the final, whether we keep it.
Right.
But it's, as far as it getting pulled on the floor, it can also be pulled on the floor.
It could get pulled on the floor, but why even put it up here? We don't have to.
But we'll make that decision Wednesday.
Yeah, Wednesday, right. So tomorrow.
We're not closer to today.
No, we'll close, we'll, we'll finalize it on Wednesday. That's, that's what I think.
Finalize it. Alright. Hopefully tomorrow, we have good news.
Right.
Wouldn't that be nice?
All the number to put in there.
Sorry, didn't mean to stir the pot.
No, I, it's just, I'm not gonna make a decision right now to pull it.
Yeah.
No, we gotta wait until tomorrow, see what happens. Tomorrow, we should know. Because we're certainly not gonna have another meeting with the police before the town meeting. Okay. Should we go through these here? Alright, let me get a, a letter here that we got from the school. Alright. Article three, I asked Article three, I talked with Mark Rich about Article three. And the reason I did that is because we got, we received the letter, which we all have, everybody should've got a copy from Ally, the letter that says pursuant to the agreement established, establishing the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District and the provisions of section sixteen D of chapter seventy-one of the general laws, I hereby notify you that the following is a true copy of the vote passed by the regional district school committee at their meeting held on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen. The letter is dated April twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen, we received it in the selectman's office on May second, two thousand and sixteen. It says, vote, Ms. Fox made a motion that the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District hereby appropriates the amount of five hundred and ten thousand dollars to pay cost of reconstructing the district swimming pool, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow set amount under and pursuant to chapter seventy-one, section sixteen D of the general laws and the district's agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority. Mr. Gosh has seconded the motion at pass seven one zero, seven, uh, four, one against, and nobody abstained. Signed by Robert Clark, Secretary, Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District. The reason I, Ally sent this email out to, to the board and says attached, please find a letter from the school regarding the vote on the pool. Thank you, Ally Galls. And at, uh, May seven, on May seventh, two thousand and sixteen, at seven oh eight, Jack Healy said, Mark, Chairman Sadek has asked that you provide the board with an article for the town meeting to approve the proposed pool repair. See attached, please give Paul a call, he gave my telephone number. Alright, then on March seventh, at, I got an email, well, an email went to Jack, says, where the vote was taken by the regional school district to seek authorization for this bar, I recommend that the town request the district council provide the warrant article as that article must be presented to each members, uh, town, to each member town of the district. And that was from Mark on May seventh. Alright, then I sent the email on May seventh to Mark after getting a copy of that email saying, if my memory is correct, last year, the regional school committee sent the board of selectmen a similar letter to repeat the outside track. The board of selectmen had sixty days to bring the request to the voters or do nothing, and it would be automatically approved. I think this may be in, may be in the regional agreement. Both Lakeville and Freetown boards did nothing. This is a repeat of last year, but for another project. I'm putting the letter on the May sixteenth agenda. If the board of selectmen votes to do nothing, there is no need for the article. But if the board of selectmen votes to bring the borrowing request before the voters, we need an article. Even though the time period to put the articles on our warrant is closed, the board won't finalize the warrant until the fifteenth and August, on, or the eighteenth of May. I believe we can add an article to the borrowing, am I correct? And Mark, our town council responded, Paul, your, your understanding is correct, meaning that doing nothing is approval. We can certainly draft an article based on the letter.
These are clear, don't worry.
But both towns should do the same. Let me know what the board determines and I will act accordingly. Alright, let's see, that was number four, five. So I responded to Mark, I said, I don't know what Lakeville is doing, but I do need the article for our board package that Ally will send out on Thursday for the board of selectmen's Monday meeting in the event the board votes to put the request in front of the taxpayers. Monday's meeting is the night the board of selectmen plans to finalize the warrant article, so I do, I do need it. If you need me today, call myself. And Mark responded saying, I will provide the article. Renegabit confirmed that the, the board in Lakeville took a vote and the vote was that the board of selectmen in Lakeville was putting it on their article, as an article on their, on their warrant. I also had to call Mark again as a result of another email that I don't wanna read unless I have to. And the result of that conversation with Mark, who's our attorney, is that our warrant is a warrant by the board of selectmen. When we start the budget process of any special town meeting or annual town meeting, we open up when people can put warrants, articles in. And we close it on a specific date. We close it to the public and we close it to the departments. Subsequent to that, the board of selectmen has the right to open and close, add, subtract warrant articles at any time until we make, take the final vote to get it out on the street. So that's the, that's where the confusion may lie. The reason I put this article in here is so that in case the board wants to go forward with this article, it would be there and ready to go. So when Ally puts this out on the street, and what day do you plan to put it out on the street, Ally?
It has to be posted, posted on Friday.
On Friday, so certainly we wouldn't have had time to get the article in. So anyway, Article three says, to see if the town will vote pursuant to the provisions of general laws, see chapter seventy-one, section sixteen D, or any other authority to approve the board, the warrant authorization vote on April twenty-seventh, two thousand and sixteen by the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District Committee in the amount of five hundred and ten thousand dollars for the purpose of paying cost of reconstructing the district swimming pool, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto, and not take any other action relevant thereto. This article allows the town to consider approval of the warrant authorization by the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District in the amount of five hundred and ten thousand dollars for the purpose of paying cost of reconstructing the district school pool. The reason, I'll tell you where I'm coming from. Last year, we let it bypass and after sixty days, it took an effect. And as you can see in our proposal for nineteen seventy, for two thousand and seventeen, it's gonna cost us thirty-one thousand dollars more to do it. I think they probably need to have this done, and I feel comfortable with it, but I think it's up to the people to make that decision. The taxpayers, when they go to a town meeting, they have to make the decision. We should not let things like this just pass. We should not let things like this just pass through and automatically get approved. So that's the reason I put it in there, and if the board wants to take, uh, make a motion to leave it in there, they can. If they don't want to, that's your business.
No, I'm not, I'm not in favor of putting it as a warrant article, um, because we can vote up or down when we look at the way we're doing the debt within the line items, because right there, it says regional debt, athletic facilities, thirty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars. So if you wanted to not vote for that, then you, the town could vote no.
No, that's not true at all, because once you let sixty days go by, it's an automatic approval and you're, and you have to vote.
Then they would have to take it out of their E and D in order to pay for it.
That's where they're taking this out of.
Right.
No, no, what you're saying is not correct.
Okay.
Could you clarify that point for me, Paul? They're taking this out of their E and D.
That's what, that's what she said. I don't know what she-
Could you clarify that point for me?
I, I, what I said was, if this wasn't approved, if we didn't approve this, thirty-one-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-seven dollars in their debt, it's their debt. So they would have to take it out of E and D because they couldn't take it out of the educational assessment. They couldn't take it out of the transportation. They would only be able to pay for it out of E and D at that point.
That's not true.
Okay.
That's not true. I'll, I'll, I'll ask the town accountant, can we not pay the thirty-one-thousand dollars?
It's the debt of the school committee and school depart, uh, district. So they're going to have to pay their debt no matter what.
Well, we authorize that debt. We authorize that debt last year when we let it go through at, without taking a vote by the people. Sixty days passed, it was an automatic approval to allow-
To allow the authorization of them to borrow.
But it's still their debt.
Their debt.
It's not ours.
So, so let's go back and take the thirty-one-thousand dollars off this year, see what happens.
But we can't, 'cause we change, well, if we do, we'd be changing the formula.
No, it doesn't change the formula, that's debt. Debt doesn't change the formula. If we take that thirty-one-thousand dollars off, I guarantee you, we'll be going to court.
By putting this on, you're saying we are assuming this debt? Is that what you're arguing? By putting this five-ten on?
No, we're not, not gonna assume it. But I don't, I-
We, we assume the debt, we, we assume the payment of the debt if we don't get the people to vote. People may vote for it, but you're just giving blanket authorization for the school committee to vote. In other words, next year, they could come back and say, we want a million dollars. Are you gonna let it go through?
Something else.
I mean, I think that the taxpayer needs to make the decision. That's how, that's how I feel, the taxpayer needs to make the decision. That's why we have town meetings, and that's why we have articles on town meetings. So, you guys make a motion, don't make a motion.
I'll, I'll make a motion to keep article three on. Let the town decide whether to spend the five-ten.
I'll second that motion, well, I'm gonna second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
One, I'll, I'll-
Supposedly.
Uh, uh, actually, I'm, uh, I'll get you a minute later.
Yeah.
And I just wanna ask a couple of questions, my own agents here.
Well, first of all, this is, you, you guys don't have a meeting going on, right?
No, 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 no. No, no. Uh, we're talking about article three, right?
Yes.
We're talking about five-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars, that's what we're talking about. The school committee voted, uh, for this. They're the ones that proposed this.
They give, they-
Have they given, uh, again, I, I just have some very simple questions. Have they, did they give any heads up to the town that they're gonna do that? Or did they consult with anybody or ask any advice of anybody in either one of the towns to say, gee, can you help us out here? Let's look at the situation here, or, or did they give you any forenotice whatsoever that they were looking for this five-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars to redo the pool?
They've been working on the numbers for the pool for about a year.
Okay, again, but, again, that doesn't answer my question, but, I mean, did, 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 did the school committee come to the select board and say, gee, you know, we've got a problem with our pool and here's our problem, and this is what it's gonna cost, and here are the estimates from three contractors? Did they do anything in that, anything like that? So what, just so, my own personal understanding, they had a vote, uh, an internal vote and said, we need five-hundred-and-ten-thousand dollars for a swimming pool, and we'll just put it on the warrants for both towns so they can pay for it.
I read the letter that they sent to the board of selectmen.
I understand, I apologize.
Did you hear it? I'm, I'll, I'll read it again.
I, I apologize, I wasn't here.
Okay, let me read it to you again.
Okay.
So you don't know. It said, this came from, uh, uh, Bob Clark, Secretary of the, uh, Regional School District. It says, pursuant to the agreement established in the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District and the provisions of section sixteen D of chapter seventy-one of the general law, I hereby notify you that the following is a true copy of the vote passed by the Regional School District Committee at their meeting held on April twenty-seventh. Vote, Ms. Fox made a motion that the Freetown-Lakeville Regional School District hereby appropriates the amount of five-hundred-and-ten-thousand to pay cost of constructing, reconstructing the district swimming pool, including the payment of all other costs incidental and related thereto. To meet this appropriation, the district is authorized to borrow said amount under and pursuant to chapter seventy-one, section sixteen D of the general laws and the district agreement as amended or pursuant to any other enabling authority, seconded by Mr. Brasher, uh, and it passed seven to one with zero abstentions. That's the letter we received, and we, we stamped it in on May second, two thousand and sixteen. And I had some correspondence, um, with, uh, our town council, were you here when I read those?
I got, I got here at the tail end of that.
Basically, uh-
Just, just give me the broad scope.
Well, but basically what happens is that we get a letter like that notifying us, if we do not take an action and put it on a, as an article, or have a town meeting and let the people decide, sixty days go by, it's an automatic approval, giving them the authority to borrow that money. That's what we did last year with the track, we didn't, we didn't put it on an article, and that's what happened.
Right. So, so, again, uh, just so that I understand this, and I can explain it to people, this is gonna be, how is it gonna, how, the payment is gonna be what? It's gonna be a debt exclusion?
No. No.
No, it's gonna come out of their budget.
It's gonna come out of us, out of the taxpayer. It's gonna be added similar to the debt ex, the debt figure that we have for the track this year. They're gonna borrow the money, it's, that five-ten will be split between the two towns.
Fifty-eight, forty-two.
Well, in this case, probably fifty-eight, forty-two, but, well, whatever, whatever the student population is at the time that they put the money request in. Okay, 'cause they're not gonna have to make a payment until two thousand and eighteen, fiscal year eighteen, because they're getting authority to borrow it now. What will happen is, they'll take whatever they gotta pay for principal and interest for that particular year, and that'll be split based on per pupil, and that'll be added. The same thing that's happening that you see in, in the package tonight. In fact, we may not have copies, but there's some extra copies here, where-
I gave them something that I gave to me.
They've added thirty-one thousand to pay for the track that was, that was approved, uh, last year, and that's being picked up for the first time, I think, this year. So they're adding that back in as debt to us. So we're paying for it.
Okay, so if you're, you know, I, I understand what you're saying about putting it on, Paul.
I'm just saying, put it on, let the people decide.
Again, I, I gotta be, I, I have to be honest, I agree, the taxpayer should make the decision about any money they spend on. But if they, uh, if they, if we, if the taxpayers decide not to spend the money, what happens?
It's not approved.
Okay.
School may shut it down in a couple of years or wherever they-
Both towns have to-
Wherever they figure it's-
No, we're not the only one, Lakeville put it on an article, same way.
Fine, certainly not surprised by that.
Yeah. All right, should we move on? Article four. Any other changes that we have?
I don't have anything.
You have no other changes? Article twenty? We have another, then we have another one that-
Twenty.
Is it twenty?
Yep.
So, this is, this is the one that, uh-
The conservation one.
The conservation one, have you seen that, the conservation one, twenty? It just came out today.
Yes. I know you changed, you had discussion.
There's no changes.
And there's, uh, there's, there's another article that's being worked on tomorrow night by, uh-
Yeah, they, they're just having a public hearing.
By the, uh, signing board, right?
Okay.
So that would be have upon, uh, on, uh, Wednesday. That's it. Kim?
So article twenty is a go on the warrant?
Page ten, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, I, nobody has any issue with article twenty, I guess.
I'm still reading.
So, just, just so the public knows, this, this stuff is, uh, is sent out as soon as the stuff changes, sent out to all board members in the finance committee as quickly as we get this stuff done. So everybody, um, has the stuff up front, there's, there's no changes that, uh, the board would not be aware of as long as they read the, their emails and so forth.
I didn't see the article twenty.
It's, that one there just came in today.
That just came in.
That one just came in today.
That's why I said, I was reading it, and you made the statement.
That's the only, yeah.
I should've read it before.
No, 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 article twenty just came in today, that's the last one that came in today. It wasn't a new article, it was just an article that was missed. We had had it before, and it was missed going up to the attorney apparently. Anyone else has any questions? We'll just, uh, finalize everything Wednesday night.
Are we done?
When are you guys meeting? Do they need to meet in?
We're scheduled Wednesday at seven o'clock. That's when we're supposed to-
Yeah, but you, in other words, you, you guys know what we've done. And, uh, I mean, there's no, you don't need us.
I wouldn't think.
Make your recommendations.
No, no, I wouldn't think.
The recommendation, it'll be their recommendations.
There is gonna be their recommendations, or us is gonna be our recommendations. I mean, it's too bad you, you, you really didn't get posted, because I mean, you got most of it done tonight. But we're not all been done tonight, but you got most of it.
Well, we could've got the mean of it done.
It's just natural, you know?
All right, if there's nothing else, anybody wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion being seconded, adjourned, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.